I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Davidson County Board of Commissioners. Tonight is Tuesday, September the fourteenth. We're glad you're here. I'll call on Commissioner Schell to lead us in the invocation and pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, those who'd like. I was gracious, Heavenly Father. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as a free people. Father, too often we look around and we try to find the miseries within our lives. Miseries within our country, miseries within the world. Father, give us the strength, the wisdom, and the guidance to recognize that the good far outweighs the bad, and sometime we just have to come to a humble recognition that you are the power of all. We call upon you, Father, to give us strength as we move forward, wisdom as we make decisions, to enhance the lives of all of our citizens, for it is in his precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some of them don't know we've got a flag back there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna turn my phone down, guys.
Commissioner Elliott is unable to be with us at the meeting this evening. May I have a motion and a second to excuse him?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Let's have a verbal vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the Council of Chambers representative tonight, I would like to welcome Tony Vazini of the Thomasville Area Chamber. Tony, are you here with us tonight?
He's virtual.
He might be virtual, but welcome. Call on Mr. Smith to lead us off with a recognition of the 2020 North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards.
Chair, I'm gonna ask Casey Tollington to come up, please, as well, and he can help me here. Last week, he and I and several staff members attended with Josh Dobson, our North Carolina Secretary of Department of Labor, the event over at the YMCA or Down Street to recognize folks that achieved the 2020 Safety Awards. You've got them listed in your packet there. I'm gonna let Casey, if he wants to call them out, we can just, we don't want to call, obviously, all the employees. I don't know, a lot of them are not here, but the departments, I think, we can recognize, please. These folks achieved their Department of Labor standards of safety and were recognized at that meeting.
If you want to call them out, Manager Elliott, because I didn't bring you up, I wouldn't explain everything, I'll probably miss one.
We had, Public Health Department was recognized, Transportation and Richards here, Davidson Works, the Elections Department, Senior Services, 911, tax inspections. And that was for our, the county manager's office, that was for the Gold Award, Parks and Recreation, and for the Civil Award for 2020, Integrated Solid Waste and the Libraries. So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to recognize those departments, if I could, please.
I just wanted to thank y'all, too. You know, it's been about three years now since I've been in this position. You've been great to me, the things that we've needed. Everybody has really stepped up and helped us out. Safety's sort of tough, everybody knows that. And I, this, this award, too, the first year that I was over here, I remember getting in the mail, I got two little awards, and they were, they were little bitty things that come from NCDOL. It was two departments, and it had this Gold Award on it, and nobody really knew what it was. We were trying to figure out, so I made some calls about it, and they told me, it was like, it's, it's all voluntary, it's paperwork that needs to be filled out, make sure they got it. I thought, well, you know, we're, we're pushing all this safety and making sure everybody's safe, gosh, at least they get an award for it. So, we started doing that, you know, the risk management group up there. So, every year, you know, we do 300 logs, when we do our 300 logs, then we fill out some other paperwork that goes in, and then they send these nice awards. And there's also a banquet, which is a luncheon that we went to the other day, that's, it's really, really nice, and it, it just feels like it gives them something. The first year, I, we handed them out, which we had COVID, that was the first year we had, so we really couldn't do a whole lot with it. This year was really neat, we had the banquet that we all got to go to and see Josh Dobson, it was, it was really neat. So, I, I thank y'all for, you know, helping me out on a lot of things, and I, I think the departments, when I bring them around now, they're looking for it. And I was like, you know, and so, and it, and it is, it's days away from work, restrictions are transferred, as long as you don't meet a certain criteria, and most of the ones that the county manager was zero. I mean, we've, we've done really good, and y'all know me, I do a lot of talking, so I try to go around and really thank them for what's going on, and, but I, I really appreciate it, and I just want to be here and tell y'all thank you. I know that it was on here, and I told the county manager I'd like to come by and just say thank you, I appreciate it.
It was a running joke at the thing, because Casey had to go up and accept most of the awards for the departments, because we let them know, we work here in the county, so all the departments were at work. So, Casey was, Casey was up there continually accepting awards, so the county was well represented, so I just wanted to let y'all know.
And you know, it's me, too, because Lexington City had some there, but we, we really took the show, I felt.
Kind of took over about a 10-minute block of awards, so.
And that's probably as most words I've ever heard Casey speak at one time.
Yeah, y'all know, I can talk to the wall.
Thank you, Casey, for what you do.
Yeah, well, I do, and I really appreciate it. This, this is safety as y'all, everybody usually knows me and what I did, and this is different, but I enjoy doing it, and, and I hope we keep on, you know, teaching safety, and there's a lot of programs, CPR, AED, myself and Out in the Hands, we, we go, we was actually out at the Senior Service Center today doing some instructions, so I enjoy it, but thank you, I just want to tell you.
Thank you, congratulations to all these departments.
Appreciate it, Casey.
If you are interested in speaking tonight at public address, please register. For the agenda tonight, Mr. Martin has requested that Agenda Item 8B, if you'll turn to that, the Award of Central Permitting Software with Open Gov, is to be removed from the agenda to give the county attorney's office time to review the contract. It will be placed on September 28th agenda. Are there any other changes for the agenda tonight? May I have a motion and a second to adopt the amended agenda?
Make the motion, Chris.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Please cast your vote.
Better turn that thing upside down there.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Mr. Martin, is anyone registered to speak?
No, ma'am, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public hearing. This is for the combined capital, 5310, 5311, 5307, transportation grant applications. I declare the public hearing open, and Mr. Jones will lead this off. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's our annual public hearing for our federal FTA grants that we use for transportation programs. We basically have three grants that we'll be submitting or requesting for permission to submit this year. One for the 5310 program, which is for senior services, those residents 65 years and older. That particular grant provides transportation for grocery trips, medical, basically anything that they need to do to help the seniors out in the county, I mean, in the cities, get to where they need to be. We also have our 5311 Community Transportation Grant, which covers our administrative cost for the transportation program, and that's what we, we submit every year. And then, we also have a combined capital for a bus replacement. The buses typically through the FTA meet their life cycle at 100,000 miles. By the time you go through the grant process, get approval and grant agreements, it's usually about 175,000, so it takes about that long after, you can't submit it until it hits 100, so you've got about 75,000 miles or so. So, we have one bus that we want to replace in 2023 to keep our, our inventory up to date and in good running order. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
When you, when you trade buses, do you trade one in, or do you?
We put it up surplus gov deals. Now, in the past, the buses typically went to gov deals, and they were 250 to 275,000 miles. I mean, we didn't get a lot of value out of them when we sold them. And the FTA requires that money to go back into the transportation fund to use for future purchases of, of transportation vehicles. Now that we're getting, to move them at a, a less miles, we should be able to get more money and to help with local matches on our purchases, ideally, so we should be able to help out better.
Do you have spare, do you keep one for spare, or you just have just enough to make your route?
We actually have, well, we have four routes, and we have seven buses, so, but we do some VA trips during the week, so there, you know, typically there's one or two not being used every day, that we can kind of rotate through the.
So, we gotta follow that?
Yes, sir.
Any additional? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak regarding the transportation grants? If none, I declare the pe, public hearing closed. Anything else that's come to mind, gentlemen? May I have a motion and a second to approve the submission of the grant applications and the appropriate time? Okay? Commissioner Trul and Commissioner Shores, please cast your vote.
Commissioner McClure, could I have your vote, please?
I have to vote for both.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Mr. Jones, I did want to say that I went through the, the colored, I think it was from senior services, and the information was very detailed about the different age groups. I was very impressed with that information. I appreciate that. I want to recognize hard work gathering that information. All right, we have a rezoning request by David Flag and Adam Flag and Cotton Grove Township containing 1.55 plus or minus acres from RS to RM. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce this application.
Thank you, Madam Chair and fellow Commissioners. We have three rezonings on the agenda tonight, the first of which is a request by David and Adam Flag to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, Tax Map 33A, Block 6B, lots one and seven, containing approximately 1.56 acres, more or less. Said property is located on the west side of Lloyd Lookabil Road, approximately 440 feet south of the Hollowways Church Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS, Low Intensity Residential District, to that of RM1, Medium Density Residential District. I think it's the intent of the applicant, if you wouldn't mind, please direct your attention to the, to the screen. These are the two lots that are being requested to change from RS to RM1. There is RM1 zoning right here, it's a little hard to see on this map. The relevant conditions with this is this, this is a 1947 platted subdivision. Southmont was originally designed to be a town. There's little 25-foot lots and alleyways, and, and the, the, back when the lumber industry was, was large down here, that's, they thought this would develop a lot more than it, than it did. I bring that up because there's been residential development down here for, you know, 50, 60, 70 years, so there's a very, there's a, a broad range of housing types. We've got, we've got some single wides right in here, we've got a double wide here on Lot 31, and I think the Flags are wishing to place a double wide manufactured home right here. I would ask them to come up and, and add anything that they would like to, and, and explain their request to the board at this time.
Good evening.
I'm David Flag, and this is my son, Adam Flag. This was, uh, grandpa's land, and we didn't realize it was zoned for, for, uh, just houses, and I, with all the construction, the way everything is done, I figured if I had to come and rezone, and it wouldn't be no problem for somebody to, to have me put my own personal home right there on the lot, because my son's got one on the back that me and his mama built. We're no longer getting, so I just took a little corner, I was gonna put my own lot right there. So, that's, that was it. That's the reason, the only reason I did ask for a re, rezone, and it's a diverse neighborhood. Everybody's got a double wide here, a house here, you know.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Crook, what's the staff recommendation?
Um, staff recommendation is for approval. I've submitted my, my written applica, uh, my written recommendation as part of the, y'all's agenda packet, and I would like to tender that as, as evidence for approval. It basically speaks to the diversity of the housing types, the contiguous nature of the existing RM1 district that's being requested, and that, that the land development plan does support residential growth, although it doesn't dictate what type, so this would be in compliance with that.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to either approve or deny this rezoning request and adopt the resolution on statement of consistency?
Madam Chair, I'll make such a motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Schell and Shores. Please cast your vote.
And that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Next, we have a rezoning request by Beth A. and Jason P. Salter in Lexington Township containing 3.65 plus or minus acres from RA2 to OI. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application.
All right, thank you again, Madam Chair. The second request tonight is a request by Beth A. Salter and Jason P. Salter to rezone 3.65 acres, more or less, in Lexington Township, Tax Map 335, Lot, Lot 23A. Said property is located on the north side of West Old US Highway 64, approximately 25 hundredths of a mile west of the Odell Owen Road intersection at 1875 West Old US Highway 64. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA2, Rural Agricultural District, to that of ONI, Office and Institutional District. Ms. Salter wishes to operate a, uh, counseling and wellness service at this location, and let's see, if I can get my.
Do we have a map on that?
Yeah, we're not.
Oh, he's signing down, okay.
I'm co, I'm wreaking havoc with electronics.
Oh, really? No, you're not. I was set up for the other one.
Technical difficulty.
I had to run on the television tonight, but remember that the flasher goes into the TV.
Okay, here we go. Thank you, Debbie. Everyone's familiar with this location right here. This is Wholesale Alley, this is West US Highway 64 on Odell Owen Road. Several years back, I think like '07, this was rezoned to a conditionally used limited industrial district to house a, a wholesale business, supply business. This is the property in question here. It is contiguous to the LI, although they're not, they're, they're asking to go to Office and Institutional, which is, is a good transitional zone between your more intensive industrial and commercial uses and, and some of the, um, the non-residential uses, excuse me, residential uses on the south side of the highway. Ms. Salter is here in the audience, and, and if she would like to come up and explain her request to the board.
So, we were requesting this basically because we've looked everywhere for a new office, because we've outgrown our old one, and could not find anything that wasn't just basically where everyone would just come sit on the couch and talk to us like normal. And we've had lots of clients request, like walk and talk therapy, where they could go outside and walk, so that's why we wanted something with more land, and so we found this where it was closer to other businesses, so it wasn't in the middle of a neighborhood or something like that. So, we felt like this was a really good option, and eventually we'd like to have some small animals, maybe goats or something, where people could watch them while they're talking, stuff that's relaxing, maybe gardens. But it would be quiet and not disruptive to neighbors either, so, you know, it'd only be during regular business hours, it wouldn't be there all hours of the night or anything crazy.
And there was a barn on the property, and is there a house, you're, you're moving into a house? Is there a house on the property?
No, the house is, I think it's burnt down, but the barn is still there. I'm not sure, we have to have it inspected to see if we'll be able to use that or not. I'm hoping we can, because it's really old and really cool looking, but, um, we'll have to get it inspected and see. But we have to put a new building on the property.
Okay, that's the plan.
And it's going to have a, a residential look, because I want it to be kind of warm and welcoming. I don't want it to have like a medical office feel, so.
Okay, okay. Any questions? Any of their own? Is there anyone in the?
What does that say, the business was?
A wellness. Will you tell Commissioner Trul about the type of business it is?
Um, we do mental health counseling, so basically people dealing with depression, anxiety, stress, that sort of thing. Couples counseling, behavioral health for kids.
How many people do you think will be working out of it?
How many people?
How many therapists are you going to have?
Right now, we have four. We'll probably end up needing two more by the time we get the building up and operational and get back to face-to-face, because we've had a lot of people not schedule with us because we're still doing telehealth only, so I think we'll grow a lot faster again once we get back to doing some face-to-face.
So, pretty much the business will be setting up therapy sessions for different types of groups, or, or people who suffer from male illness, or maybe?
Yeah, but it's outpatient, so it's going to be, you know, your, your lower end of the, the spectrum as far as mental health goes. It's gonna be, you know, your everyday stressors more so than, we don't get a lot of severe persistent mental illness.
Anxiety issues.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you'll be relocating, it's not a new business, is it?
No, no, we've been in Lexington for, um, three, almost four years, in April, it'll be four years.
Where are you located now?
We're only telehealth now. We were on, uh, Second Avenue, um, by the dentist there, in Suite C.
Okay.
But we only had two offices in there, so we outgrew that pretty quick.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Crook?
All right, thank you. Again, my, my written recommendation is in your packet, it does support this rezoning request, and while we're not contiguous to an existing office and institutional district here, and we're introducing that to the area, we feel fortunate, and this is a really good fit because of some of the reasons I spoke of earlier, with the, with zoning, you have intensive use with your LI and your HC, having your most intense commercial and industrial. This is a really good fit to try to step down to your more residential along the 64 corridor. So, the land development plan does support the request, and we would recommend approval.
I'm assuming everybody's okay. Um, I'll declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to either approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Shores and McClure, please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Next and final rezoning request tonight is by Terramore Development LLC in Tyro Township containing .20 plus or minus acre from RA3 to HC. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook?
Thank you. We, we, our last item, we have a request by Terramore Development LLC to rezone two tenths of an acre, more or less, in the Tyro Township, Tax Map 5, portion of Lot 60. Said property is located on the east side of North Coontz Road, approximately, excuse me, approximately 280 feet north of the West US Highway 64 intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA3, Rural Agricultural District, to that of HC, Highway Commercial District. How we got to this point with this property, um, this land was initially zoned back in 1973, and back in the early 70s, they really liked to do corridors with a certain depth, and they would run along, uh, road features. And we've got, what we've got here is, it was the clear intent of this was to have a 200-foot-deep corridor that just ran along this section of West US Highway 64. Didn't follow the property line, so what we've got, Terramore is in negotiation for this property in, in Lot 46. They want to locate a Dollar General on this site. There's, there's property here to do this, this project. What we're talking about tonight is simple locate, simply locating the driveway. I think in, in Mr. Almazan, Daniel Almazan will be here, or he's in the audience, to represent the application. What we're trying to do is move the driveway a little bit further north. I think DOT is more comfortable with it, further away from 64, which will make it a little bit safer connection. With respect to the driveway location, I think they can function with the zoning as it is now, uh, but we're just trying to rezone the whole property so that the driveway can be put in a little bit safer sight. And at this time, I would ask Mr. Almazan to come up and explain his request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Daniel Almazan with Terramore Development. Our office is at 214 Clumac Road in Salisbury, and with me I have Justin Church, who's our civil engineer, so, so obviously here, if, if there's some additional questions. Mr. Crook already did a great job explaining why we're here, and so, so basically, we've got a parcel that has split zoning. For the most part, wouldn't, wouldn't kill anything. We, we are excited that this is a, this is for a DG Fresh, which is a new prototype, which allows us to, to include fresh fruits and vegetables in an area that, that isn't really served by, by any grocery stores, and so basically, we will have a mini grocery store in the new Dollar General prototypes. So, what, what Mr. Crook was referring to is that our driveway plan, it, we can't have it as it stands right now, we can't have any of the drive aisle in the portion, yeah, there we go, perfect. You see where that, that, that corner puts us right there, we would have to shift the driveway, you know, closer to 64, and obviously, we've got a, we've got a very busy intersection there, and we'd like to keep it as far away as we can. DOT was hoping that we could do that as well. And so, if we can just rezone this corner, have consistent zoning throughout the parcel, you know, allows us to push the, the entrance back a little bit, and just makes for cleaner zoning and, and a safer project for everyone. And so, with that, I respect your time. If you have any questions, I'm here, Justin Church is here.
Have any questions, gentlemen? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Mr. Crook?
Thank you. Again, you folks are, you have my written recommendation of, of support for this application. We're contiguous to highway commercial zoning. Our land development plan recognizes the Coontz Road, uh, you, West US Highway 64 intersection as a commercial node. All four corners have commercial zoning of this intersection, Tarheel Q, there's some, there's propane place, that, we feel like Dollar General would be a good fit here and would recommend approval. Also, the land development plan does support this, so.
I think furthering your way, furthering you get that driveway way from 64, better off your, I think it's.
Yes, sir.
It's an obvious there.
It's a matter of safety.
Yes.
Pretty hot in Little Corner there occasionally.
Yes, it can be.
I think Dollar General's gonna do real well.
They do on every corner.
On every corner, yeah. I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency?
Motion. Second.
I have a motion for Commissioner Yates and Shores. Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Crook.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, uh, Dollar General and a barn, they took a barn and laid a Dollar General.
All right, on the consent agenda, um, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Hey, now, to make a motion, we approve items on the consent agenda as per Senate.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
And a second for Mr. McClure and Shores. Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Moving on to deliberation, I have a resolution to share with you tonight on declaring September as Preparedness Month for Davidson County and our citizens. September as Preparedness Month for Davidson County and our citizens. Whereas National Preparedness Month is an observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing for disasters and emergencies that could happen at any time. And whereas Davidson County has been affected by a number of disasters and emergencies in recent years, including, this will remind us of the past Hurricanes Hugo, Fran, Earl, Dennis, Jean, Ivan, and most recently Andrea, and the sixty-nine tornadoes that affected the county since nineteen fifty. And whereas counties throughout North Carolina have been affected by a variety of emergencies, including mudslides, wildfires, flooding, earthquakes, and the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Whereas in twenty-twenty, the state of North Carolina experienced forty-eight tornado touchdowns, two-hundred-and-forty-seven flood incidents, and six-hundred-and-nine severe thunderstorms with damaging wind and hail, all of which resulted in more than twenty-seven and a half million dollars in damages statewide. Whereas the peak period of hurricane season is historically mid-August through October, and September the tenth marks the peak of hurricane season. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one theme of National Preparedness Month is, quote, "Prepare to Protect." Preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. And whereas National Preparedness Month, all these P's, is aimed at encouraging citizens to develop an emergency plan, build an emergency kit, and take other proactive steps to prepare for potential emergencies. And whereas the Davidson County Board of Commissioners desires that every household, property owner, and business in Davidson County be prepared for potential emergencies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Davidson County hereby declares September twenty-twenty-one as Preparedness Month in Davidson County, and encourages all citizens to prepare to protect their loved ones by developing an emergency plan, building an emergency kit, and communicating their emergency plan to all members of their household and/or workplace. This is the fourteenth day of September twenty-twenty-one. And I offer that as a motion. Have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
I'll call Commissioner Schell to do another proclamation for Constitution Week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation Constitution Week of twenty-twenty-one. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth anniversary of the drafting of this Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the two-hundred-and-thirty-second anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Davis County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens of Davis County to study, study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. This is the fourteenth day of September twenty-twenty-one, and I consider a motion acceptance.
I have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Please cast your vote. And Ms., Ms. Harris has some additional information to give us.
I would recommend that we send a copy of this to Washington.
Agreed.
Sheila Segre was unable to be here with us this evening.
Take it up.
But she wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the Lexington Public Library lobby contains a display from the Daughters of the American Revolution in honor of Constitution Week. She was actually one of the first ones to ask that we continue this after it came on the first time. And she wanted to bring it to your all's attention so you could try to get the word out that the library does have a, a display up in there, in the lobby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get our vote?
Yes, that motion, we are done.
Okay. Thank you.
And that motion carries by a vote of six zero.
Okay. All right, we have, our last item tonight is continued discussion on public health, new COVID funding and addition of staff. Mr. Smith, you'll lead us off.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Lillian Coontz, our public health director, to come up, please. Um, at the last meeting, the board approved, um, it was actually just a budget amendment to prove, uh, what's in total one-point-three-million dollars of new funding from the state. They call them five forty-three funds, where seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand and some change was approved. Six hundred held out for future discussion of use at maybe a facilities committee meeting. That seven forty-eight was to be used for these additional staff and, um, purchase of, uh, supplies for the COVID clinics. I think, um, Vice Chairman Yates, um, wants some more discussion on that topic. So I'm going to turn it over to the board, but Lillian's here with any questions as well.
Y'all ready? Lillian, what, um, how much money do you plan on spending on, uh, supplies?
The supplies number depends on a lot of different things. If we have to get into the testing realm, then that could increase the dollars for supplies.
Do you anticipate getting into testing or?
Commissioner Yates, as long as the group is operating at the fairgrounds and operating successfully, we have a testing option in Davidson County.
And I think you wanted two nurses to, to give, uh, maybe vaccine shots, is that right?
Yes, sir.
How many vaccine shots have you gave this week already?
Um, let me get my papers. Today's Tuesday. Today before I left, I believe we had done eighty and yesterday seventy. The reason we're requesting this is for the booster dose search that we're anticipating not to continue on with what we're doing right now.
What, um, how many free locations are there in the county that's giving these shots? Do you know?
How many free locations?
Free locations, yeah.
Um, the COVID-nineteen vaccine is free. There's no cost with that. Some providers do charge, uh, visit, an office visit when they come. The number of providers that we have in Davidson County, um, you've got the health department, you've got some places that are just doing it for their patients as they are recommended by the physician. So they're not really doing it for the public, but just the folks that they already see. Currently providing vaccines, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine private pharmacies. And then we have the Walgreens and CVS locations that are doing it.
And both, all, both hospitals, right?
I don't believe they're providing vaccines right now.
According to the internet, they are. Uh, they're providing free vaccines. So can we find that out if they are providing vaccines?
Yes, sir. The, what I was told the last time I checked with them was that they had to stop because they didn't have the personnel because they were responding to patients. But I can check on that for you.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big deal. Uh, and the reason I asked, I asked several people, I've done a little poll in the last couple of weeks of people getting the vaccine. Ninety-five percent of them was getting them from either the professional healthcare provider or CVS or Walgreens. Nobody told me they was getting them from the health department. So I didn't know if you was promoting some of these places, they could go for free, because I kind of liked that. Like CVS, they got a store in Denton. The folks in Denton are going to go to the CVS. That's pretty convenient for them, you know? And I'm sure you got some other locations throughout the county where it's closer for them to get to the gro, uh, to the drugstore than it is, um, to the health department.
I would agree. Um, last week, we were told by, um, the state that CVS Corporate has made a decision that they will open fifteen appointments a day, and Walgreens will do thirty-five if they're able. But that will be their max, fifteen and thirty-five a day.
Uh, Walmart's actually doing them too. Is that correct?
So, um, I've got some numbers on that if you'd like it. Um, the state provided us with what a hundred percent of retail pharmacies look like for the booster dose, and their capacity is eleven thousand one hundred and sixty doses in Davidson County with what they've reported to the state.
So that's how many they've done so far, eleven?
No, sorry, that's their capacity from September through December to, um, meet the demand, uh, anticipated with the boosters. Um, the demand that we have learned and the numbers that the state has asked us to prepare for in that same time period depends on a couple of things. If it's a six-month recommendation or an eight-month recommendation. At a six-month recommendation, Pfizer and Moderna total projections for Davidson County for the month of September is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-four vaccines. And like I said, the retail pharmacies can do, if they're able to do a hundred percent, um, you know, everybody has staffing issues, but their number's eleven thousand.
So who's going to do the rest?
Well, the health department's been.
The hospitals or the providers, the, you just told us what the numbers were for the pharmacies, I, I take it.
So when I spoke with the pharmacies, I asked, I got a list of all the provider pharmacies or, I'm sorry, the vaccine providers in Davidson County. I sent an email to them last week and asked them who would be willing to do boosters and who would not. Um, those numbers were quite low, it was less than a thousand. And then, like you said, the retail pharmacy, those numbers were reported to the state, and that's where that eleven thousand number came from.
Okay. So, uh, this information from the state, are we not privy to that information as commissioners?
You're, I'm sure you are, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I hadn't seen any of that. Have y'all seen any of this information that was coming? The reason I asked it, I remember a year and a half ago, March of twenty twenty, that I asked for, uh, the COVID, um, positive cases in Davidson County. And I was told I couldn't get that. And I was also told that if, uh, and I said, well, can I get it in zip code format? Because another friend of mine and another commissioner, he was getting that information in another county. And I was told that I couldn't get that. And if I wanted it, it would have to be by court order. Remember that conversation?
I don't know what the, when you originally said what, um, you were asking for positive cases, I don't know what your original, were you asking for names? Were you asking?
No, well, I was just asking for what part of the county was the positive cases in. And nobody could tell me it was a big secret. And I was told, and Casey, you remember this, that the only way I could get that information, and I read this email from this lady today about one hundred counties preparedness. Have you else, did you see that email?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, um, presidential initiative, NCACC.
Right. But, you know, one thing she, she wrote on there that, you know, leadership is so critical to public awareness, you know? Well, we couldn't make any public awareness assumptions or by any kind of data because we didn't have any data. And again, my answer was from the health department, that the only way we could get any of that information was by court order or legislative action. Do you remember that, Casey?
Well, that actually wasn't from, it was from our legal staff.
Yes. I, I, now, I didn't, I didn't hear that was from our legal staff. I heard it was from Raleigh.
I mean, we couldn't, we had the HIPAA laws in our way at that time.
HIPAA has nothing to do with zip code.
It did, because it got moved out of the way when the state decided to do it by zip code.
There was, Commissioner Yates, I remember that also. I, I remember the discussion we had about that. And, um, what we learned over a period of time was that they slid off of that because there was a great deal of frustration about not being able to identify the extent of the challenge that we had within the county, and also about being able to identify as to whether this was localized in one particular area or not. And so the information and the legal position that we got, both from the state and from the federal position on this, evolved over time. And so the information that the health department is able to provide today, the information that the CDC and, uh, state, uh, is providing is, um, certainly a lot different than what they were when we first started with this pandemic.
Okay, so I got another question now. Did this come from our legal department or did this come from the North Carolina, uh, Department of Health?
I think it probably came from our legal department as we tried to assimilate information from all the different sources that were available to us.
Because certain counties decided to go on their own and do this, and, and that's fine. But I wasn't willing to quote-unquote violate what was sitting in front of me in terms of law with some other county deciding to do it. That's on them. But it's no point.
There was, my understanding, it come from the North Carolina Department of Health. I was never told that it come from, uh, our legal staff and our management here.
I, I think, I think, I think you're correct on both of those. I think it came from the state, and I think it also was, was reviewed by us because there was, there, as, as the manager indicated, there were some counties that were not complying with that. Um, and I know I had some conversations with the county attorneys in those jurisdictions.
And then we talked to the state folks and said, listen, there's folks doing this. Why don't you guys just do it? And they did. And so we didn't have to go forward and create a way to do it because they started doing it, which was a much better pathway anyway. If you go on their website now, you can see it by zip code. And it was, should have been probably done that way the first go around, but they just didn't do it.
Well, like I say, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought it come from the health department in North Carolina. I was going to file a class action lawsuit myself, so I liked to have the information pretty straight, you know, because I felt us as leaders needed to know some of this information.
There was a great deal of frustration about that. And, um, and we, we heard that frustration. We felt that frustration. We tried to work a way through that. And ultimately, as the manager indicated, the majority of it was resolved by the state providing that information. And, um, there was no question about their authority to do so. They were initially reluctant. They ultimately, I think, felt that pressure and, and started providing the information.
You know, the problem is that even if the state may not say that to you, as an attorney, you should know what's legal and what's not legal, and what's HIPAA law protected and what's not HIPAA law protected.
Yeah, and, and this was not a HIP issue. This dealt with some other requirements of public health. And, uh, and it was clear that they had the authority to do things that we did not, that the state could elect to do that. And ultimately, they, they decided to do that. So we are far removed today from where we were back in the late spring of twenty twenty with access to that information.
A year and a half ago.
Yes, sir.
But you know what? Back then was when the information was pertinent. A year and a half later, and that's what's really upset me about this whole COVID thing, you know, is we can put people on the moon, but we can't keep up with data. I mean, you know, to me, if, if you was in combat or in war, you'd want to know where your enemies was at, even if you had to do it by zip code, so you could attack that area and treat that area. We didn't know that. We run around, well, it probably would have been months, but it was weeks when they wouldn't even, and it's not your fault, okay? I'm just saying I don't like the data. I don't like, I'm all about numbers. I'm all about data. We track a lot of numbers in my company, and, uh, if we didn't have that data, we'd be in pretty bad shape for years. Okay? And some of the data that I've seen coming out, the other day, I think I sent an email on your webpages, what fifteen, a hundred percent, uh, more likely to contract COVID? I got on the internet and tried to, if you wasn't vaccinated, I got on the internet and tried to find that study. Couldn't find it anywhere. So you'd think a study that important, there would have been all kind of data out there to, uh, review. So I asked Casey about it, and I got some email that we're checking into it, and we don't really know. Maybe we've done it in-house or something at the state level. I've never seen anything else on it.
Depends on what day you tune into the TV station.
Well, no, I, I sent the study back to you in reference to a page.
Right.
But they did do it in-house.
Right, just an in-house study that, I mean.
They have their own epidemiologists, their own staff folks, you know, to run their programs.
The HIPAA thing, if I'm not mistaken, was, was when they was trying to trace contacts. And they're trying to determine who had come in contact with one or the other, and they had to get personal information to be able to do that. And HIPAA says you can't do personal information.
And I didn't want any personal information, of course. You know, I just wanted zip codes so we'd know where the people was at if we had a problem in Wahlburg or.
Denton or.
Or wherever it may be. Maybe we could try to figure out and isolate and try to figure out where it was coming from or, uh.
A lot of times when they don't want to do anything, they say it's against HIPAA because that's the easy way out. But it, they, they relax that and say. Cause that's the easy way out, but it, they, they relaxed that and said it wasn't.
So anyhow, this seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that, you know, everybody's spending this government money like it's just, let's spend it, they gave it to us, let's spend it on something, you know? Contact tracing, last time I seen a couple, two or three people you was gonna hire for contact tracing. You know, I get some that thinks it's important. I know eight people that's had COVID in the last four or five weeks and I don't know that you could contact trace all the people. They don't even know who they was around. So if you can't contact or contract all of them, is there a big need to contact trace period?
That is a tenet of public health. At the rate we are right now with the dramatic increase in COVID, you're absolutely right. So there is a formula, um so to speak, but it is essentially there are priorities. So if someone lives in a nursing home and they have COVID nineteen, that's one of the ones that the contact tracers that are available will work on. That is a high risk area and it's congregate living. If it is a school student in the school systems and the schools aren't aware of it, that also heightens the risk. That information is dictated by the state and then at the local level, you look at the capacity you have with staff and try to operate in the best way to reduce risk. But you're absolutely right, Commissioner Yates, you cannot call everybody. And that system is also flawed because it requires someone to answer the phone. And not everybody answers their phone.
You know, so I, I just don't wanna throw money away for, if I don't see the benefit of it, it's really hard for me to throw money away. Sooner or later, like I've told you before, our grandkids has gotta pay this money back. And uh they kinda expect us to spend it wisely. I did see in this grant that you could actually build a facility, if I'm not mistaken. I, I, I looked at the six, six different things that you could spend the money on. Most of it was data and reporting. Uh, somebody's got a whole lot of data to send to the state if uh, if we take and spend this seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand bucks. So that's kinda all I wanted to say. I'm not real crazy about it. If I was gonna do anything, I remember we had a couple that was homeless, that didn't have anywhere to go. Uh, I don't know if you was here then, y'all.
Uh, yeah, it was last summer, I think, we did the one time at West Campus.
Right, and we had to put them up in a gym and a-
But we did try to figure out, wasn't there a facility we owned, we talked about in facilities committee, what was it?
Mr. Manager actually went on site for that.
It's either Linwood or South Line.
Linwood, we were talking about.
It was the Linwood Ball Field.
Yeah.
There were a lot of issues with that building. Um, it was a great location for several reasons. But um, I believe it was Mr. Childress shared that um if you did that significant remodel to the building, it would require fire suppression that would have been incredibly expensive. Cause they didn't have that.
What about the um, I don't have my paperwork right here in front of me, but the um the testing kits, testing machines, uh that's something that you could buy, buy, or not machines, but the testing kits that you could buy was one of the things that, that you could buy. And one of the big things was the uh, the deep freeze refrigerator. I mean, these are things I think is, is tangible. Refrigerator, we can utilize it or the public health department can utilize it for lots of things. Uh, these testing kits and stuff, I, I think, you know, that's probably important. And last I heard, there was an issue with, I think you, last time you reported, there was an issue with whatever was going on over at the
At the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds. Has that been resolved or they?
It has, uh, we reported it to the state and they uh took care of it. I believe they were going to uh, I hate to say this, cause I'm not really sure, but it sounded like they were gonna clean house with the staff they had and replace. Because they were very disappointed with the-
Yeah, they would cut that off right at five o'clock if people had been in line for thirty minutes. They just come out there and tell them that.
Well, that and people was not getting their testers back and having to be retested, so um I just, I, I'm like Commissioner Yates. I think seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is a whole lot of money to spend. I think we need, I think we need to baton down exactly what we're gonna spend it on and, and, and know where it's going and what, and it needs to be-
How much do you think we ought to spend?
Well, it depends on what equipment that-
Depends on what kind of results we're gonna get.
We need results, we need this data.
The, the public wants us to do something. I've been reading these emails. They want us to do something if we do it wrong. Let's do something. We are sitting up here as leaders of the people in Davidson County and we're not leading. We're not leading. We're just, we're just sitting here arguing with each other.
I'm not arguing.
I don't think anybody's arguing. We need, we need to get past this pandemic. And the way to get past it is to support our health department and to do all we can to, to stop this dread disease. And, and we're, we're not, we're arguing over things.
Now, let me tell you this, you're not gonna stop the disease.
No, that's right. You're absolutely right. But let's get on the other side of it if we can, and we're not doing it. But uh, the people sending emails now, they're saying do something. We put you up here to do something and we're not doing it.
I have not seen an email warning.
We're not too, we're not too today.
I, I think that was nothing to do with that. That was to do with the preparedness of one of-
That was a preparedness thing, yeah.
That was a resolution you just talked about earlier.
I've got, I've got twenty emails this week from people and it's like a, a spam email. They're all sending the exact same thing about they're gonna vote every one of us out if we vote to have masks or all this other stuff.
On Facebook that you're a member of. That's where it's coming from.
Well, I don't know where it's coming from. It's forgot people's name on it, but the point of it is, is I've seen no emails to my email that says that we've got a mandate mask.
I've been reading them today and they, they names in them now. There are names in them. We need to do something if it's wrong.
Those I've seen today were something totally different.
Well, it wasn't totally different. It was about this.
Now, they mentioned mask and uh vaccinations, but it was totally differed about awareness and preparedness.
It was in the awareness, preparedness email, but it wasn't about the awareness and preparedness though.
My, my thing is, is what I'm saying is, I agree with Commissioner Yates. I would like to see, I'd like to know where this, this seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is going to. We do answer to the people. We do answer to-
Are you saying that you would like for uh Ms. Coontz to itemize what you would like?
I would like to see, I think that's, that would be-
I don't think she can.
I, I don't, I don't know if it has to be an itemization. I don't know if that's the right thing, but-
There was a, I'll send it right now. There was a line item budget on the twenty-fourth meeting, so I can send that back.
Correct, and Commissioner Elliott actually commended our team for doing such a great job and spelling it out. So I apologize if I didn't bring that with me tonight because I-
And I get it. It was a couple nurses. It was three contact tracing folks.
Actually, uh Commissioner Yates, those people are more data entry people and they are required to support the vaccination. So when you receive a vaccine, it has to be recorded in CBMS. So it requires your name, your address, your date of birth, your phone number, your email address, all your demographic information. And then you have to also record who provided the vaccine and what part of your body that vaccine was given on. So you really need to do it in real time. That's what those other positions are. The nurse has a very hard time talking with the individual receiving the vaccine, giving the vaccine and data entering. It's just, it, it slows the process down. So this person is a data support person that we're asking for. Currently, right now, I'm sorry.
How many data support people?
What are we asking for? Uh, three.
Three, two thousand and twenty-three, am I right?
That's the term of the grant. And I believe I provided the board with a previous hire letter and offer, I, I apologize. And um, a job listing that, that showed it was temporary and the position job offer said temporary. So if there was ever a time that we did not need them, it left, left us with the latitude that we did not have to continue to employ them.
And when we do temporary, that's benefits and all, correct?
Correct.
Why don't we just do contract labor?
Contract labor? Um, so you're saying with a temp, with a temp, um, that is possible. I suppose, I don't know very much about that. Um, it was in my mind, and we have seen success with this already. When we hire on full-time people, there are other jobs in the county that become available and they take those jobs. So they apply and they're already in the government system. That is why, and I believe I shared with y'all last time, when we originally came to you, we have asked for a full-time nurse, a couple part-time nurses and some data support people. One of those data support people found a job in the health department that they were qualified for. They applied for that job, took the job. At that time, our COVID cases were down. So we told that person, yep, great, you're gonna go to this new job in the health department. When we need you, we're gonna pull you over to do the job you used to do at the health department. That person was willing to do both. So that worked out very well, but we did not fill the position and that's one of the positions in the request this time, to re um fund that position.
How many data support folks you have now?
Currently, uh, one.
One?
Yes, sir.
Here's the information from the-
There's the, the line item budget.
Here's the HR.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Thank you, Debbie.
How many vaccines uh did these two folks? I guess you had two at one time.
Yes, sir.
How many vaccines did they keep uh?
I, I don't have a report that shows how many they assisted with. I can tell you the health department to date has done sixty-six thousand and thirty-seven vaccines.
So you done sixty-six thousand with one or maybe two?
No, sir. We did sixty-six thousand with eight social workers who work in our care management team that in January through-
So they done the data entry.
Right, but they can't do that now because they are no, they have to go back to their other jobs. There were some reprieves that were given to public health in the initial point of this crisis. Since then, Medicaid transformation has come around and we, that team essentially has new bosses. Um, because they now are working with the prepaid health plans that we have in the county. So they're not, they're no longer allowed to be sort of scooched over to COVID response.
Uh, question. I know Livian's had been up here before, the board before with, with um request. I think that what she has been saying is that they looked at the situation in their department based upon how they work and how the state says they're gonna work. And she has come up with a, a, a figure that she feels um is necessary to be able to, to uh, uh fund the, the um COVID stuff in the health department the way it should be done. Uh, you know, if, if we get down here in, in the weeds and we start saying, well, we, we don't need needles and, and we don't need this over here and we don't need that over there, we got a department head who is well versed in what it is and, and this is her request. And I don't see anything, um, any reason why we should send her back to try to cut stuff that she's already said she needs.
The only reason I mention it, Commissioner McClure, is if she didn't have this one point three million dollars free money, she probably wouldn't be standing here asking for these positions.
Well, one of the positions she is asking for is to replace a position.
That should have been her regular budget request. If she's looking, it should already be there. The position should already be there, is it not?
It was. We were funding it out of an immunization, um, different pot of money that y'all um approved some time back. Again, I think I've been very clear with this board. We have used the AAs as they've come to us. That's what this whole thing is about, agreement addendums and those dollars to offset dollars that this board budgeted for the health department. So for example, uh, you may come to a COVID nineteen clinic and see me working. We don't have enough people, so I'm working in the clinic. When I work in the clinic, I tell Janie Ainge how long I worked in the clinic. The money that Davidson County was gonna pay me for that day, those hours are now billed out of the AA. So that money at the end of the year turns into dollars that go back into the general fund. So the dollars that we had earmarked for that position, that we were no longer fulfilling, those dollars went to offset other folks, including that person that was in that position. She went into a county funded position, but when she worked COVID clinics, we billed her hours out of the money that was already budgeted for her in those dollars and we just worked them down.
Madam Chair, I called a question.
Alright.
Alright.
I make a motion we approve the amount that uh has been requested.
Madam Chair, that's not the way you called a vote, I called a question. If you're gonna call it a question, that's due to a procedure incorrect. That's not the way you call a question.
I'm sorry, you do what?
Yeah, that's not the proper way to call a question.
Well, tell me how it is.
If you called a question, that's in the form of a motion?
No, it's not.
Oh, yes it is.
Anybody can call a question.
Mister, no, no, one commissioner cannot rule the board. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you kindly read the procedure for calling the question?
Forgive me if I might. I, I, I'm not sure that at the time the request was made, that there was a motion before the board. After the time that that was said, however, I believe I heard that there was a motion made by the commissioner to approve the budget. The question that I would have for the board is, it's my perception that these funds have already been approved and that the matter was placed back on the agenda tonight just for discussion. And so I believe the board has already approved the expenditure of these monies. And unless there is a-
But we really don't have a vote on it.
Unless there is a request by the board tonight or direction from the board to change that tonight, I don't know that there, that it was my perception that this was for informational purposes unless the board elected to go in a different direction. And, and I may stand corrected, but I just wanted to clarify that. Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Cut the discussion off so early. I would say we look for other places to spend the money.
Well, it's already been approved. Are you saying we, now we wanna disapprove?
Well, what I'm saying is, uh, we don't even have a morgue or we don't even have uh here in the county to take care of some of these people. What was it? A freezer we needed? A walk-in freezer?
No, sir. Part of the request is to get a freezer to host or hold the vaccines. The Pfizer requires ultra cold storage. Currently, we got it on dry ice and that is um very difficult. We have staff coming on the weekends. We call out and Haynes, he brings it by. An ultra cold storage freezer would be a great way for us to store the vaccines. We can't even get all that we want now. The state will only give us one box at a time, which if we have a staff member out, that creates problems regardless. It's a wonderful piece of equipment. We'll be able to use it later on for varicella vaccines that we provide at the health department. The issue at hand that I feel like I should share with you before you uh, so you know that everything that we've got going on. We had January, February, March, almost an entire public health department team to meet the demand of this community for vaccines. We received concerns, calls, questions, Facebook messages often from, when is it gonna be my turn for the booster? That's what we're talking about. We're trying to prepare ourselves for the booster dose. The FDA is meeting on Friday to discuss the rules about the Pfizer booster. The Moderna program, they have put forth their packet, but there's not a date for it. If the Pfizer booster gets approved and they tell us at the local level that, okay, green light, go, you need to start boosting people that received a Pfizer vaccine. Whereas in January, February and March, we had fifteen school nurses, three community health nurses, eight social workers, and then the other couple of positions, we don't have any of those people anymore.
I got that. But you remember our conversation at that time, you didn't have any private sector doing it either. The Walgreens wasn't doing it, the CVSs wasn't doing it, the hospitals wasn't doing it, Walmart wasn't doing it. So back when we was discussing this, you didn't have, and you told us up here as a board, I can't wait till we get some help, you know?
Yes, sir. And in that time, period since, um, the, the data that I have received, the community does not have the support to do all these vaccines. A heavy majority of this will continue to fall on your public health department.
So you telling me all the doctor's offices that are doing it now, the hospitals I read were Walmart, CVSs, Walgreens, won't make up the difference for nine nurses?
That they will, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that they won't make up the difference of the nine nurses that we lost for the school system.
No, sir, because when we do it at the public health department, you don't have to be a, a patient there. You don't have to have an established relationship and we do it in a mass clinic setting. I mean, we, we say that's what we're doing. We're not trying to sell things, other pharmacy drugs like a retail pharmacy is. We're not seeing sick patients out of the same staff of folks. The state provided us with a four-week administration rate and this was from Ja- um, July twenty-ninth to August twenty-sixth. The highest group behind us was Gies Pharmacy in Lexington. They did five hundred and seventy-seven vaccines at that time. The Davidson County Health Department did one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three. People still come to us. I don't know who um you're talking to differently, but we're busy. I mean, we see on average a hundred people a day.
When did you get that data?
Last night.
I'd like to add a little bit before that. I didn't know we had-
I don't know that we'll get to do mass clinics this time either, cause the college is back open with their, you know, we were able to run a lot through that drive-through, but this time, I'm not sure.
It's not. Thomas stopped me-
Sites are gonna have to be hard to find.
And said I could work with him at West Campus. They don't have a- And said I could work with him at West Campus. They don't have a drive-through option. Uh, the majority of the people that we vaccinated in the very beginning, y'all may remember, were elderly and they can't get out of their cars. So we have to sort of bifurcate our- our program.
Well, West Campus would be a good one 'cause you got the- the driveway circulates around a little bit. That's not-
You know, the only thing I'm saying, I would like to see you try to contract labor with nurses like the school system did the other night. I think they contracted with nine nurses from one of the nursing agencies. And that way, if you have the boom, good, you covered. If you don't have the boom, then we're not sitting here spending tax dollars for somebody you're gonna use somewhere else doing something else. And again, that's not what we're supposed to do with this grant anyhow. We're supposed to spend it on COVID-related issues.
And that would be all that they do. I can look into contracting. The things about contracting that I know so far that are hiccups, because we have state contractors. They weren't able to draw up their vaccines out of the vials, so it required a public health nurse to work with them. Couldn't drive and go to people's houses. Um, we're- we're doing home visits. Nobody else that I know within the community is going to homebound folks. We're also doing the long-term care facilities for their booster doses. Don't know that the state contracts allow them to work around in there. There's a greater amount of accountability and also responsibility that comes with an employee that's employed by the Davidson County Health Department.
So we got nurses traveling out to people's houses?
Yes, sir.
Doing these?
Yes, sir.
And you know there's a possibility there's gonna be a lot more work put on the health department too with this federal regulations.
Well, that's why I brought up the mass clinic. If you- if you can't run thousands through the parking lot, you know, it makes it harder to do a- a big group of them.
Now, what I'm saying is, is that they're gonna have more to do now that that federal mandate says that they gotta be vaccinated or have a COVID test each week. And then, you know-
It could get cumbersome.
I don't think the health department would get involved in that, would they? That's an OSHA regulation.
The ones we'll talk about in October, that's another topic for another day.
Speaking with Casey there, please, now. That's an OSHA deal, right? Or is it something-
We're gonna talk in October about the one, the first one that came out, the ETS with healthcare settings. The one from Friday, let that one be for a little while, 'cause it's- it's got a long ways to go before it gets to-
Okay, you're talking about the first one that-
Yeah. The one for healthcare settings. I already talked to Josh Dobson's office. That one's being enforced. So we'll bring stuff at the October work session to talk about that one. That one was fairly narrowly scoped. The thing from Friday's a whole different animal and a- a different- it's got a long ways to go before we get rules on that.
Okay. Well, I-
Well, I'd like to say something. I- I just, I think Ms. Coates has done a remarkable job in a very difficult situation. I agree with Commissioner McClure and Commissioner Trull. I don't think you would ask us for things that you really don't need. So I'm just going on the record to say that I believe in what you need. And, um, that's all I have to say.
Let me be clear while everybody's being clear. I think y'all done a good job too originally. Okay, I mean, I don't have an issue at all with the job that the health department done. Nobody else was doing it at the time. And I wondered when the private sector would- would go. And of course, they had a big mess-up trying to get the vaccinations or the- the vaccines to us. You remember all that?
Sure, I do.
And, uh, you know, but again, I thought, "Why did they even throw this stuff out here till they had a pathway to have more than our health department on the line?" I mean, y'all worked your fingertips off trying to get this stuff done. And I get that. But now we have private sector and we have hospitals, which is better equipped or should be better equipped.
If I may just say one thing to that. Um, these vaccines, as we've pointed out, are free. And so for the private sector, it's not a big moneymaker. And so they're not- they're willing to meet the demand of their patients. Like, you have an established relationship with your doctor, that's where you wanna get the vaccine. They're willing to help you out. The majority of the people that are coming to us for vaccines don't have that relationship. Hospitals, great, but you may remember the first vaccines we did here were at Lexington Medical Center. We went and vaccinated three-hundred of their employees because they weren't vaccinated yet. And they had vaccines, but they weren't vaccinating their folks yet. And as your public health department, we thought and believed strongly that we had to make sure those folks were vaccinated so they could provide care to people in the community. So a tenant of public health is immunization. That is a task for your public health department. Yesterday, I think it wa- yesterday, yesterday fourteen kids walked in because they had to get their immunizations for schools. Not a COVID-19 vaccine, of course, but they had to get their school-required vaccines. Immunizations fall on the public health department. We are the safety net provider. I completely agree and understand, and I apologize that I maybe wasn't following you until very recently about like, "Hey, let's get our private partners, our- our companies in the community to step up and take some of this burden off the taxpayers." But Commissioner Yates, I honestly do not believe that our community has the capacity. And we will continue to see large numbers of people come into the health department need- department needing vaccines. Monday through Friday, that forty hours a week, I got one full-time nurse, one part-time nurse, and currently one data support person. One of our data support people left and we're- we have that other job posted. That was something completely separate. That job's posted, so we'll have two. And that's what we've got when these people start rolling in. I can't rely on the folks that I could earlier. I'll be honest with you two, um, tomorrow I'm sending out a schedule to the entire health department that says, "This is your Saturday." We're gonna have to work on Saturdays. That's the only way I can use the workforce that I have. Because the forty hours during the week, they're promised to their other public health roles. So my folks are gonna have to be working on Saturday to meet this demand because that's the only way we can do it.
So they're not doing appointments anymore? It's just show up, right?
No. Well, we're doing appointments now, but we're having internal discussions and feel that we're gonna have to go back to appointments with this influx that we're expecting when they release the boosters. And that's- that's another- another piece to the puzzle. It is another hill to climb. You gotta have folks answering the phone. We gotta have folks setting up those appointments. I mean, it's just a- it's a lot more work. And I wish that we could just do walk-ins because I'll be honest, it's been quite nice that we're just there and people show up. And, you know, sometimes it's a little bit busier than others, but it's way less of a burden on the health department. But I think if we're doing the history lesson too, remember how excited we were in Davidson County that we didn't have elderly people sleeping in cars trying to get an appointment. I don't think we'll have that same flurry of people, but if we don't book appointments, I anticipate that we would have issues with all kinds of people showing up at the health department. We couldn't social distance them. And again, they're probably gonna be elderly and they need to be in cars. So we want to be as customer service friendly as we can to our community.
I mean, where do you do it in the health department? I mean, that looks to me like that would be dangerous just to even be doing it in the facility.
How do we do it at the health department?
Hey, we're at in the health department.
Okay. So, um, it's a two-story building. Downstairs, um, is the lobby. Folks come in and then they can either take the elevator or the steps to go upstairs in the clinic. And then we have clinic rooms. If they're non-ambulatory or they need to remain in their vehicle, that side parking there right now, we're able to do it in those two spaces. However, when we go to this larger number, we used to have a tent set up in the parking lot and people could drive through there. And we'll have to go back to that because right now we're vaccinating people primarily that are younger and more mobile. So we'll have to go back to that drive-through.
Well, I've probably about talked enough, but-
Madam Chair, if I may, I just, I know that Novant Health, uh, owns the Sears building in Forsyth. That's in Forsyth, it's not here. But I know they are doing shots for anybody that comes free all day long. Uh, they have a- a whole team over there. That's- that's all they do. So I know the- I know at least Novant is doing that. I know that for a fact. Um, and, you know, maybe we could reach out to- Novant has a facility in Thomassville. I don't- I don't know anything about Lexington. I think they're owned by Baptist. I don't know what Baptist is doing. Um, but-
Their atrium now, like-
Their atrium. Um, but I think, like Commissioner Yates said, you know, I know they're- these hospitals and- and the things, they may not can do the capacity that we can do, but they would also take up some of these numbers that- that we're talking about also.
Yeah. And that's one of my thought processes too. Why do you get them to drive our way to Lexington? In other words, we should be advertising these folks that are doing it countywide. I mean, I typed it in my Google search and it gave me like fifteen places that was giving free vaccines. As a health department, we need to be putting those folks out. So the people in those areas, like you said, Thomassville, anybody living in Thomassville now knows they can go to Novant, get a free vaccine, you know, not have to travel to Lexington. You know, that's a big deal for some folks, you know, to get another fifteen mile up the road. So that's just my point. Why, you know, I don't like duplicating stuff a lot. If we could get our private sector to take some of the pain away and then-
And you guys don't have to work your tails off like you have been. And I agree. Everybody knows how hard y'all work. We all know how hard you work. I've been out there and seen you work. So I- I at no time will say you all haven't worked your tails off. I just agree with Commissioner Yates that without these other folks out here, y'all shouldn't have to continue to be doing that.
You know, I just wanna say one thing, Madam Chair. We're- it seems like to me, and I'm gonna sit back studying this thing, we're not here because you're doing a poor job. You know, people can make it look like that's we're attacking you, but that's not the- not it. People wanna say, "Well, we're supposed to be doing something." That's what we're doing right now. We're trying to figure out what the best approach is. When this thing was a- and- and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause I've been wrong before plenty of times. My wife would tell you that. When this thing was presented with us, this is all that was presented. Not these other options that we could utilize this money for. When you- you mentioned it, Tom mentioned it about contract work. Why all of a sudden it's gotta be employees drawing benefits and salaries? Why can't it be contract workers? They wouldn't have to worry about that. And you could probably hire more. You know, uh, uh, contract with more than just hiring these people. And if you- anybody dares goes against Lillian, our health director, shame on you. Yes, Lillian, you've worked hard. That's what you get the big bucks for, okay? You've worked hard. Your staff has worked hard. We're all proud of our health department. But there are options out here that we as commissioners should be looking into. And not just going along just to get along so we look pretty in- in the face. We weren't presented with the option that you would- you would contract out. That's not what we're presented with. And that's- and that's the reason that the majority of commissioners at that time voted on that, voted for that. Because we didn't know what the other options was because we weren't presented with it. It's like somebody else gets an agenda and presents it to commissioners and this is what you can vote for. That's not right. That's not what our duties is, are. And so I- I- I want you to know that I- I- I appreciate what you've done. But as a commissioner, I don't wanna buy praising me up here because that's what I get paid to do. You know what I'm saying? And your staff and I worked hard. And I saw how you organized, you volunteered. So it's not an attack on you or the health department at all. It's- it's- it's a separation of what our responsibilities are and what the health department's responsibilities are.
Yes, sir. Y'all have a- a role. And I will tell you, I don't come to y'all lightly. Um, I've been working in this in eighteen months. My best path forward is to hire people. Because again, the state contractors that we've had are limited. And honestly, they call out a lot. But- and so we set appointments or we're gonna be somewhere and we don't have the folks. The people that work for us have a much better show rate of being there. I mean, so I have thought about this and looked at it. We have five state contract vendors that they're not on here or- or not on your books. They are, again, taxpayer dollars, as Commissioner Yates has pointed out. These are taxpayer dollars that are going to pay this. But these individuals come to us. But they have to work in conjunction with a public health nurse. So I don't want to put ourselves in a position where we hire some contractors that come with a long list of things they can't do.
Lillian, can I interrupt you just one second?
Yes, sir.
To what you're saying, a couple of times you have said state contractors. Are you saying that, I'm just gonna throw Bayotta 'cause that's the big name out there, you can't use Bayotta? 'Cause they are like fully licensed nurses that does everything. Or are you limited to a state contract?
We are not limited. You are correct. So that is a possibility. Again, though, with my public health experience in this COVID crisis, the most reliable and most functional employees are employees of the Davidson County Health Department. I can't hire a- a Bayotta nurse to do the data piece, I can tell you that. One of the other positions that are packaged in there was a preparedness coordinator role. Like Casey said, the community college is out. They- they- they got classes. At the community college, on a good day, we could run twelve-hundred folks through there. That- there's no place in Davidson County that we have found that has internet, uh, tables, chairs, restrooms, a place for people to eat, uh, parking close to a highway, anything even close to that. So the preparedness coordinator that we're asking for would be responsible for finding different locations in the county. The community college is available on some Saturdays. So that would be a thing. But it takes people to pack up this stuff. I mean, you gotta take all the syringes, all the things like that. So I'm telling you all this, not to belabor a point, but guys, I really do look at this. And I've been in it for eighteen months. The numbers that they've given us, quite frankly, I feel like my request is somewhat low. I mean, I don't know, I- I don't have a crystal ball. I would love to have a crystal ball. But we are woefully be- below staff for what they're telling us we're gonna need to do. People are gonna have to wait.
And I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner Shaw, because that's what I thought I said was a contract nurse, not a, uh, contract state or a state contractor. So that was not even in my mind, a state contractor. It was, I think the school system contracted with Bayotta or-
Right. Well, she had said state contractor. I didn't know if she was limited to the people that she could use.
Right. And I'm glad you asked that question because I- I didn't even have that in my mind, anything about a state contractor. But I was talking about a nursing firm that could do that. And here's the thing, I don't wanna take a nurse away from a job that she may be working at now with no crystal ball. And we don't have the influx of people looking. I mean, you know, I think at one point in time, uh, a year and- a year and a half ago or so, it was sixty-five or seventy percent was the number that I got that we was gonna have vaccinated within a year. And what are we now, about forty percent or so?
Yes, sir. Full- fully.
I think seventy was the target that they wanted to get to for the immunity.
No, seventy percent is what they said we was gonna have vaccinated soon. Or within, I took it within a year. 'Cause I asked Lillian, I mean, "How- how much of the Davis County population do you think's gonna get vaccinated?" You know? Or they're telling me, you know, "We're gonna have an influx of people." It'd- it'd be around sixty-five or seventy percent was the numbers I remember.
I think so. And in the very beginning, it was a whole different landscape. People were beating down the door to get a vaccine.
And nobody had a crystal ball. And that's what I'm saying now. So with no crystal ball, I would feel safer with contract nurses than in three or four months that if people didn't come out in groves to get their- their third shot, that you wouldn't have to say, "Okay, well, you know, we just ain't really doing the vaccinations that I thought we were doing."
As your public health director and-
Don't use them somewhere, right?
No, sir. That's not what I was gonna say at all. And I think I said too, if we don't have the work, they're temporary positions and they leave. So if they- if we don't have something for them to do, they will not be working.
Right. But you see what I'm saying? If somebody leaves their job and comes here thinking they got a job, I mean, I hate doing that to people. I really do. With my company as well. I really gotta make sure I got a long-term job for them before I ask them to leave a good job that they may already have, you know?
We got some young nurses. And then, uh, the nurse that we have in our full-time COVID position was just ready for a change. And she was ready to leave her place and knew it was temporary and came to work with us. Um, again, I just, I don't know how to say it. I don't have data in front of me and I don't have numbers about the number of times that the folks that don't work for the health department but show up here to work have called out. Or they're late. Or they have car trouble because they're from far away. Um, or they're- something's going on. So we have a much better show rate and a much better functionality with the nurses that work for the public health department. But that's two of the positions. So if you're just saying that those- those two, then I understand that and we can try to contract them out. And if they gotta be partnered with a public health nurse, then I'll be coming back to you and saying, "Hey, those folks we contracted have to work with a public health nurse and I got one." So they can't work independently, then we're in a bind.
Lillian, can you explain to me why? You're talking about these nurses, they're a fully-registered nurse, right?
No. Some of them are LPNs.
Okay. Is the LPNs the ones that have to be partnered with a nurse?
The state, when they first came out to us, they were unable to do drawing. That has changed. So that's- that's new this week. They can draw. Man, they can actually draw out of things. But the first few weeks we had, they couldn't. That was a state issue. They just told them they weren't licensed to do it.
LPNs?
All of them that came from the state, RNs and LPNs. I don't know what a- I'm- it's the state rules. We- I've been told you don't look a gift horse in the mouth. They sent them to come work for us. And so we partnered them with a- a public health nurse. Now, one nurse oversaw the- the team of five that was working there that day. So it was one to five was the ratio. And that worked out well. That person drew them up and they gave them the vaccines and they put them in people's arms. Now they've changed that. I don't know what a Bayotta contract would look- Now they've changed that. I don't know what a Bayada contract would look like. I don't know what a Maxim contract would look like. But I also do can assure you that this, the, the full-time nurse that we have doesn't call out. She takes her vacation that she's eligible for, and if she's sick, she doesn't come in. These other folks, the temporary, I don't even know what sort of relationship they have. We sent an email to the state, much like Outen used to do with Web E O C. I know that y'all are probably familiar with that, when you need resources, you let the state know and they send you what you need. All health departments have the opportunity to let the state know, we need nurses, and then they send you them. Where they come from, I'm not exactly sure. A lot of them knew each other from other temp work. But those folks call out a lot. And so then, we're standing there telling people, you got an appointment, and we don't have nurses to give them doses. So I feel more comfortable asking for two more full-time nurses. I feel like it puts us in a better space. Temporary work, if we don't have anything for them to do, they're out. I appreciate too, we don't want anybody to leave a good job and come work with us and then be like, say, Nora.
What, uh, do you know the zip code where you have most of your, uh, people coming in for vaccinations? What's the zip code, uh, that they're from?
I don't know that, off the top of my head.
So you don't know where they drive them from and what parts of the county, like first, second, third zip code or anything?
No, sir. And you know, um, we were doing a lot of outreaches at the firehouses. And so we were trying to be closer to folks, um, and so we were at different firehouses. And so that CVMS program that I was telling you about, that we have to have the data entry for, whenever I try to run a report, it just does that little whirly thing where you want to see it and it just, it will never run it. But I can try to get that information for you.
That goes back to my point. That information is so important. But when it sits there and does that, then nobody has that information. And to me, without good information, it's.
I'll also say.
Good judgment calls, you know? It's hard to make good judgment calls.
Is the state tracking zip code by vaccines instead of the cases now?
I, I don't know about that either.
I, I love they.
I don't think they are. I think it's just by county.
But I don't know about vaccine.
I will say to Commissioner Yates, that the transportation department can transport people at no cost for vaccines. So, um, again, you wanna be convenient.
Sorry, guys, didn't mean to be so boring there and, uh, yeah.
How's it on some public health, please? Um, yeah, again, I'll just say, you know, I've worked, uh, oh, this has been unprecedented. It has been difficult. It has been challenging at every turn. I don't take lightly the comments that this board makes. I try very hard to serve you guys, because you're elected by the people that I'm supposed to serve. And so I really respect your opinions. And as Commissioner Shale said, I don't, I really, nothing would be more boring than just to come up here and y'all be like, yep, green light, bye. Don't ask any questions. Because also, when you ask questions, it helps you talk to people in the community about what we're doing at the public health department. So I want y'all to ask questions and I want y'all to know. I also want to say that there are so many complexities with this. Sometimes I just don't think about all the intricate details. But what this little paper here shows you is reflective of a good ten hours of management teamwork trying to figure out the best way to use this money, at least ten hours. I mean, we're not just like throwing up stuff and hoping it sticks on the wall.
And another good point Commissioner Shale made a while ago, I seen this come out in June, June twenty-sixth.
Which thing? The agreement?
Grant, the grant, June twenty-sixth. Well, we got it like two or three weeks ago.
We had to get all that stuff together. I mean, and we're busy.
I would at least like to know the grant was available. I mean, most of the time, we have a hearing here about a grant and whether we're gonna approve a public hearing or.
Not exactly a grant, but yeah. I mean, the agreement agenda is dollars from the state. There's no match, there's nothing like that. They just say, we want you to do this. If you do all this, we'll give you the dollars and we have to report to them. Our team has to take these and figure it all out. And again, like I said, y'all find me working in a clinic. We're, we don't have staff just sitting around waiting for this.
I understand that. I'm out on the job every day, so it's hard to find staff. And good luck with finding a nurse, uh, or a couple of them that may show up every shift and, and not call out too. I mean, or any other employee right now for that matter.
Madam Chair, if I may, one more thing and I'm, I'll be done. I don't know if this is you or Casey, either one, but what are we paying these nurses? Cause like, going rate right now is twenty-seven dollars an hour for, for a nurse. That's a new hire out of college. So, I mean, if we, if we're not willing to pay them, because they're leaving hospitals by the droves because of it. So we're gonna have to pay them, um, what's it called, uh, the going market rate or whatever, or we're not gonna get them. So if we could do, if we could do the contract, I think that would be easier on us and quicker to get you somebody. If they're, if, if they're allowed to do their job.
One thing I would say, the, the type of nurse that your public health department attracts is somebody that doesn't wanna work weekends all the time. Somebody that wants to work pretty much Monday through Friday, eight to five. They have kids, they have, um, they're tired of hospital work. Um, hospitals are tough right now with COVID. And as Commissioner Yates says, we don't wanna take a talented nurse from our hospital, because they need all the help they can get. But it's a certain type of person that's a nurse that comes and works at the health department. Um, our school nurse team is a whole different ballgame. But like I said, the one that we have hired, our full-time person, she, I believe, has more than thirty years' experience. I don't wanna be telling her age or anything like that, but she, she's close to the end of her career and she was just ready for a pace change. Our part-time nurse is in school to be a nurse practitioner. And so she works with us a couple of days a week when she's not in class. Um, I, again, I, I appreciate the thinking outside the box with the contracts. It has just not been reliable and not been fully functional for your public health department. And when I got one, and I'm asking for two more, trying to think of two more that can't function at a hundred percent. Um, I mean, like I said, the one that we've got full-time, she's on the road a lot doing these homebound vaccines and these people that they really can't get out of their homes. And then we plan on using her in the nursing homes. First go around, the state contracted with, um, CVS to go to all of our nursing homes. They were really high-risk folks. Not anymore. Your local public health department's doing it, so that's a whole lot of the vaccines.
So can we contract with CVS?
No, sir. No, I mean, I, I wouldn't even know how that. I think the reason that they're not doing it is because they jumped into the doing it themselves at the office. And like I said, they're willing to do fifteen a day.
Is, is there a way for you to find out? If they can't, they can't, and they're not gonna be good to you. But can you find out from maybe some of these staffing agencies like the Bayada or, I don't know other names. But if they could be a fully functional nurse? Cause you're right, if they're not gonna be, then they're no good to you, and I understand that. But is there a way we can find out?
Are you saying that, that, uh, we, we disapprove of this?
Uh, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm asking, cause she's saying that whatever the state's been sending her is, they can't function as a, as a full nurse and do their job, which is, she's right, is no good to her. But all I'm saying is, is there a way just to call somebody Bayada and say, can you function? Call the state. I don't know who's telling them they can't, and that really makes no sense to me. Of course, the state does this kinda stuff all the time. It doesn't make sense why they wouldn't send you a fully functional nurse that is really gonna hamper you to start with.
Well, like I said, they, they've released that now, so now they can draw. I mean, that, but that was the first time that we had them. There's still a lot of stuff, like they can't go certain places. They can work on these days, they can't work on those days.
I think she's talking about state contractors again, not nurses from, is, am I right?
The group name, the, the young lady that oversees them came today, and I'm trying to remember what her badge said.
That's the state contractors. We're not, we're on two different pages here.
I don't even, I don't even want you to try to use those anymore if we don't have to.
Well, no, we want them.
I'm just saying, like Bayada or someplace like that, can they send you a fully functional nurse?
I can find out. Again, that's just not my recommendation, because again, of the, the accountability that we have. But I'll be more than happy to look into that.
That Lillian, if you haven't worked with them, how can you say they're not any good?
I'm not saying they're not any good. I'm saying historically, in the, 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 since we've received the, the nurses from the requests from the state, I don't wanna miss, misspeak on this. We request them from the state, they come. There's no dollars coming out of our state dollars, county dollars, no dollars from us coming out. Those are what I'm considering contractors. They have told me that it's not, I'm sorry, not they, but the team in the health department says oftentimes, at least once a week, one of them calls out. Do, are the Bayada people the same? I don't know. I also heard, Haven Beddard, but since we're still here talking and having this lengthy discussion, that, uh, some of the nurses that have been contracted have already quit for the schools, which is not good.
Well, that girl's own page was state contractors.
So I, I mean, I don't know.
And that may be the case. I mean, I don't know. Like I said, there's not enough nurses to go around. So you may hire one that works two weeks and quits too, so.
You're exactly right.
We don't have that crystal ball to know. And again, I don't know if Bayada, you know, some of these contracted firms in the past, if one nurse didn't show up, they sent you another one. You know, so you're likely of having somebody on the floor was a lot better with one of them than it would be for yourself.
The depth maybe would be there. So that, that's definitely something I'm looking to. Uh, I, the purpose of bringing this to y'all when I did several weeks ago was because we anticipate, well, the federal government said you can get your boosters on September twentieth. Um, and so that means people will be calling us on September twentieth, trying to get those boosters, and we don't have the staff to do it. So that's why I brought it to you back then. Um, I can bring it back to you in another couple of weeks. We'll just hang tight and tell folks.
So how would you get a nurse hired between now and September the twentieth?
We won't, but we would have if we'd had it approved then. So I'm just saying, if I come back again in two weeks.
If we'd had this back in June, I mean, surely that would've been one of the first things that you would've knew that you needed nurses.
In June, Commissioner Yates, we didn't have a booster dose date. And we also didn't have the request for vaccines that we have right now. You may remember, we're on a downhill slide. So we thought, we were sitting there thinking, are we even gonna ask for all this money? Like, what are we gonna do with it? Again, we're trying to be responsible about this. In June, landscape was very different.
July the first, nobody knew about kindly when, uh, the, the booster was.
I don't know when, uh, Biden made that announcement.
No, I didn't know nothing about it until a few weeks.
I mean, Biden just sort of made it out of the blue, and to be honest, it's been really frustrating. Um, because the FDA hasn't approved it, ASAP hasn't approved it, and there's all these hoops that have to be jumped through. But that doesn't change it for the folks that watched it on the seven o'clock news and they want that booster dose on the twentieth. But we're trying to figure it all out.
I don't think the Moderna's still been approved.
Moderna hasn't, neither has Pfizer. Pfizer goes on the seventeen.
Well, like I say, one thing for sure, I'd like to see from our health department is all the providers and something put on their Facebook page of all the providers that are doing it for free, like Novant. Novant Emergency Department will do it for free.
And they just put out, didn't they, that they didn't want people to come there for that, because their emergency department was overrun? There was something in the dispatch today. I got a whole bunch of, uh, messages about that. Like the dispatch was saying, don't go to the hospital ER because they're overrun. But the thing about the free thing too, again, the vaccines are free. There, there's no, supposed to be no cost, but a lot of times when you go to your doctor's office, they ask for your vac, your insurance card.
I'm talking about the doctor's office anymore. I'm talking about Walmart, uh, Marketplace I seen the other day on sixty-four was offering the vaccine. Of course, the CVSs, the Walgreens. I'm just saying, to me, that's a public service that we ought to let our people know. I mean, a lot of people maybe think the health department's the only place to get it are their doctor's office. You know, to me, we would be doing a public service by letting them know. I mean, like I say, I've done a Google search. Not everybody can do a Google search, but I'm not so sure, you know, all those. I mean, somebody needs to be making a phone call going, are, are y'all offering free vaccines, Walmart Marketplace? If you are, we need to post that on our Facebook page. Uh, we need to know it as commissioners somewhat too, so we can share it with people. You know, if you need a vaccine, you know, instead of driving all the way to, uh, the county seat, stop by the CVS over there in the neighborhood, they're, they're giving free vaccines right there, so.
Walmart now is slowing down on the COVID, because they're picking up on the flu shots right now too. One pharmacist told me that. That, that might be why it's limited to so many per day or something now.
And that could be it too. Like I said, those numbers were really horrifying. When they said fifteen a day, I was like, gosh, that's really not gonna help us out a lot. Um, but we're gonna, I mean, even, let's just say that y'all approved this. We're still gonna be at a deficit if the numbers that the state is telling us are coming down are coming down. And as Commissioner Shaw said, your public health department also does flu vaccines. We're planning for those. I mean, public health continues with the COVID-nineteen vaccine work. Um, I think that we're at a place in Davidson County where we have done a good job. So people tell their friends that the health department does a good job and they show up to us to get their vaccine. Um, I don't know, um, what, I don't know what people watch otherwise, but the state oftentimes leads with the health department. Like I said, the screenshot I got today said, go get testing at the Davidson County Health Department. That was in the dispatch. We don't test. We don't have people to test. So the misinformation is out there too. Um, I don't, vaccines, again, like I said earlier, are a tenant of the public health department. And I think that's why so many people expect and want us to do it, um, because we do. And again, the private companies, the ones, like you said, um, the, the retail pharmacies, that's what they call them. That's the general term for the Walgreens, CVS and Walmart. Um, but the other private providers, a lot of them just, they don't have the dry ice capability to keep the Pfizer. Um, they don't have the manpower to provide vaccines. And that's why when I reached out to them, they gave me some low numbers. And those numbers are all speculative too. You gotta have the people show up and ask for them.
So when you reached out, did you call corporate or one of the local stores or something there?
So the retail pharmacy, that information, like I said, was garnered by the state. And they gave me that number and they said at a hundred percent, it was that eleven thousand number. The people I reached out to, the state provided me last night with the updated vaccine provider list, and they all had an email address. So I sent it to my computer and I cranked one out and said, hey, it'd be great if you could let me know what you, um, can do. And they responded with what they had done, what they would be doing. Some of them have done zero, um, and some of these, the ones that they're doing, I'm, I'm not working directly with it, but our team provides vaccines to them, because they can't store them themselves. So we get the vaccines, we give it to the doctor's office, and they give it to the people. Um, I, another number that maybe, uh, would be, you asked how many I had done in this week. For the month of August, your health department gave two thousand five hundred and eighteen vaccines. So that was the whole month. Um, and that about maxed us out with what we got.
Sounds like a lot. You know the zip codes for these two thousand five hundred and eighteen? No?
Mr. Manager, if we go to hire somebody, is, is that a couple of week program? You, you're gonna hire me today and you start, is that what?
Put movement through orientation and take a little time, yeah.
What about a contract? If, again, I'm just throwing the name out there, Bayada. If we used Bayada, what is in play, I'm talking about how to, how can we get our nurses the fastest? If, if, if we do a contract, wouldn't that be?
Fastest possible, fastest thing, son. Yeah, if it's approved here by this board.
Yeah, I'll have to come back to the board. We'll have to get y'all to approve it, and then, so we're at that timeframe as well.
Come at your board?
No, sir, your board.
Okay, but it's gotta be approved by your board first, then.
No, sir. Contract serves a responsibility of the commissioners.
Well, this money's already been voted on and approved, so if we spend it a little bit different way.
You're gonna have to vote to change that.
Because, I mean, I'm sure all these numbers are not correct. I mean.
These are the line items that'll get appropriated based on the last meeting.
But some will, some you'll spend less on, some.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, if it, like, you asked about the supplies, so I mean, it, it depends on what you, so you got department supplies, medical supplies. I mean, there's what, what are all that? The rest of that stuff from workers comp up, that's the people.
But you got three hundred and eight thousand for salaries, so if Bayada gives you a hundred, hundred thousand dollar contract for these nurses, it's good, right?
No, no, y'all would still, I don't have a contract with Bayada, so I would still have to come with y'all to that contract and y'all would have to approve it for me to hire these folks, right? So I can't do that without y'all's approval.
So if it's a con- contract, we've gotta approve it, even though we've already approved to spend this money?
Right, cause you don't, she don't have the contract with Bayada, so we would do two things. We'd bring the contract back while we're doing it. We'd probably move the money from the three hundred and eight down to contracts.
Okay, okay.
All right, let me tell you this. I don't think, you know, and we can call an emergency meeting if we have to, if this is that important. Um, if we see the influx of people coming in or we, here's one thing I just thought about when you were talking. You may need six or eight nurses to begin with. And if everybody's filing out here to get this, uh, booster shot, two or three may not do you. You may need five or six or seven or eight. I don't know that Bayada or one of these other ones can do that. I don't know if they could give you that many or not.
We still have this, the data entry problem. It's like a two-person thing, but yeah, I hear you. I, if I had a crystal ball, I could tell y'all exactly how many people were coming, when they were coming, and what exactly I needed. I anticipate when the green light goes on for these booster doses, y'all will receive calls from people who called you however many months ago. I can't get an appointment at the health department. Why can't I get an appointment? We just don't have the capacity. So even with six or eight nurses, at the health department, the major, the, the maximum we can do safely there in our building in a day is about two hundred and fifty. We don't have the community college during the week. We're talking about Saturdays. Like I said, I'm sending the information out to our team to assign them a Saturday. That helps us out a lot. That just increases our work week and gives us another day. And for people that work Monday through Friday, that's a nice thing for them. It's a better option. They can come. And for people that work Monday through Friday, that's a nice thing for them. It's a better option. They can come on Saturday. Um, but still, if we used, if we needed six or eight nurses from a- a contract company, then we wouldn't have to ask our staff to work. So they might appreciate that, and we could use these contractors. But I don't know what they can do. I don't know if they'll show up. I- I, I'm not, again, Commissioner Shaw, you're right. I should not be so flippant about a company, or any company that I don't know anything about. But the history has shown us, the people that, when they show up, they're great, and we are so appreciative to have them. But at least once a week, somebody calls out.
When you say you're gonna do it at the community college, would that be inside the building?
Inside and outside.
So do you have people coming in to get their vaccinations inside the building?
Tons of them.
See, that worries me too, because you're taking somebody that may be positive, coming to get a vaccine, because they're gonna come and try to get their vaccine because they think that's their last chance. And they all over a community college that we got kids going to school in. So then it transmits again.
Well, we would only do it on Saturday when the kids weren't there, um, and so, but I hear what you're saying. That was the concern that we had early on about our staff being inside with these folks. But, um, January, February, March was really cold, um, and so, uh, our staff really appreciated the opportunity to work inside. We had four teams outside at the drive-thru, so we do a hybrid there. You can drive through or come inside, um, but-
And to me, I'd rather see tents set up, and that way nobody's touching anything. I mean, again, I don't know how this is transmitted, but I would guess a lot of it's transmitted by- by touch and- and hands. And of course, you know, there's different, again, there's different, uh, studies that's been done, how long it lasts on different surfaces or whatever. But again, you know, when you start having them inside a school building where you got a thousand or kids or so coming through.
It was at the Mary Rittling Center, which was the conference center, and they don't really have a lot of kids in that area. Um, cancer great unless it's raining.
It just takes a few to go back into the population, and that's how it made it from wherever it comes from to every continent in the world, so. It's every continent in the world. But I- I'll go along with what some of my other colleagues want to do, but, um,
We're not just making decisions tonight. We're just discussing it. Decision was made before.
Lillian, on the salaries?
Yes, ma'am.
That includes two data?
Um, nurses, the preparedness coordinator, the data entry person that would support the communicable disease person. That communicable disease team is the one that's doing the, um, nursing homes and the at-home visits. And then two other, uh, data entry people. So two nurses, three data entry, but one of them's a little different because it's supporting the, um, communicable disease, and then, um, that preparedness coordinator. Because as, uh, Commissioner Yates was just talking about, uh, tents, they're heavy and hard to set up, and you gotta move them around. And so, again, that's why I thought preparedness coordinator would be great, because our preparedness coordinator, if you haven't met her, her name's Summer Curry. She's fantastic. But she also is a restaurant inspector. So, you know, she doesn't have a hundred percent of a job to give to this role. So we need her to get some help because she works all the time.
Okay. That, that kind of explains that, that, that money, okay?
Madam Chalmers, most of the journey.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Coons. We appreciate the information.
Commissioner Yates, did I understand you want a copy of the, uh, providers and those, uh, things that I got? Okay. I'll get them-